I'd like to call the order of the January 22, 2019 Bristol, Virginia City Council. At this time, please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hope everybody had a good, safe holiday weekend. I know the community had a lot of good events going on. I hope everybody got out and participated in Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday event. So with that, there's a couple of things on the agenda tonight I just want to point everybody's attention to, which I think is important. One is we're going to try to set up a couple advisory committees, assuming that goes forward from this council. You know, it's been a long time since we've asked citizens for input on the budget process. I think it's important that at least we hear what their thoughts are. Whether we act on those recommendations or not is, you know, up to be, you know, voted on, but at least get some new eyes on the, you know, budget and see what the citizens are seeing that maybe we're not seeing. And then other advisory councils really for the landfill, really looking for some experts, people that's got some finance background that we can really start digging in and see what we can learn that we don't know already to see if we can point ourselves to the city in a direction of what to do about the landfill. So think about those. There are going to be applications up, assuming we vote on that tonight, and hopefully some good citizens will come forward and want to participate to help us out. We've always asked for citizen input, so it's a good opportunity to work on a couple important items. And then the last thing, I know the Finance Committee and the CFO spent a lot of good time on the finance policies, so that one on the agenda tonight is a real important milestone for us to try to wrap up some things that keeps our, I guess, our focus financially in a straight path, so that's an important one for us. So with that, any other comments from council? All right, city manager?
I don't have any comments.
All right. With that, we'll move to matters to be presented by non-agenda items. We've got, first up, Michael Pollard.
Thank you, gentlemen of the council. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. I am very glad to see the city pursuing sound financial policies, including planning in advance for capital expenses as any proactive organization should do. And I'm also glad to see the fire department find grant funds rather than depending exclusively on city taxpayers, and I wish other city departments would follow their example. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next person, Nancy Marnie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I am a property owner. I have noticed over a period of time that in the presentation between the Falls development and the Casino development, there are some similarities between the two. I was told a few years ago, probably three years ago, maybe four, I was told face-to-face by two of the principals behind the Falls development that the city would be getting $11 million a year in tax money from the Falls development. There is no indication on this earth, heaven, or hell that that has happened, none whatsoever in any way, shape, or form. We were also told about all the jobs to come, all the shoppers to come, based on nothing but shifting sand, false assumptions. The legislators of the state of Virginia were pressured beyond belief to change the state law of the state of Virginia to allow development of the Falls. The governor of Virginia, McAuliffe at that time, signed the permission of the legislature to make it possible for us to have the Falls. Now, I have a number of questions, but the major question I have right now, may we expect the Casino development to be as successful as the Falls?
All right, thank you. All right, with that, moving into regular agenda items, we've got one change we need to make a motion to modify.
Yes.
Item 10 from a topic.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we amend item 10, change the reason for the closed session to section 2.2-3711.a5 rather than a 6.
All right. Motion to modify from a 6 to a 5 on item 10. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Farnham. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item 1, consider second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend the city code 74.7 and the city subdivision ordinance 50-356 and 30-357 by caption only. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're here to ask for the second reading. Regarding these code changes that we have overseen for the last few months trying to come together with a very good, positive workflow process for future addressing, as well as in some cases existing addresses here in the city to make us compliant with the next generation 911 that will be upon us sometime around the third quarter of 2020.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Okay, no one signed up for public comment, so what's the advisory council on this item?
Move that we have the second reading by caption only.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion, Mr. Hartley. Second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Please read the ordinance caption only.
Title amending Bristol, Virginia code standards for street names and addressing, an ordinance amending chapter 50, article 3, subdivisions, section 356 and 357, and chapter 74, article 1 in general, section 7.
Okay, now I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt the ordinance.
I move that we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, motion, Mr. Osborne. Second, Mr. Farnham. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item 2, consider second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend the enterprise zone, chapter 50, section 133, and zoning map by caption only. Staff report.
Yes, Mayor and council members, this again is a second reading as well of ordinance changes related to the enterprise zone, which is a state incentive program, and it's, the text is contained in the city zoning ordinance. So at your last meeting, there was a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission. They recommended these changes. There are two incentive changes, and then there are map changes to add area and delete area, so adjust the boundary lines of the enterprise zone slightly. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, no one signed up for public comment on this one, so we need a second motion by caption only for the second reading of this ordinance.
I make a motion that we proceed to the second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, Mr. Osborne. Second, Mr. Hartley. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
And a reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Title amending Bristol, Virginia code for enterprise zone, and ordinance amending chapter 50, article 2, zoning, section 133, and the Bristol, Virginia zoning map.
All right, now I'm looking for a motion, second, to adopt the ordinance.
Move that we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item 3, consider approval of resolution of support for VDOT urban additions. Staff report.
You've got the list here. On the streets, some of the streets are new that need to be added, like Lee Highway, the widening there. There was an old, they had suggested to us about adding Sugar Hollow Road in there, which is inside the park, and so there's several in there, and then some of them are deletions, which will be replaced. The only way we can make a name change is if we delete the road and rename it, or if the length is slightly different, we have to delete it and then re-enter it or add it back. And so that basically the total, there's an increase of approximately $68,000 that comes back to us for the additions overall. And so there's just minor changes. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Well, one question I have is what's going to be deleted and taken off? Are they going to be added back in?
Yes, in, I think in all, but, yeah, there's, on Bottom Road, there's a section of it that they counted twice. It's like 17 hundredths of a mile, so we're shortening one piece to make up that difference so that it's actually going to be a little bit less on us there. But some of them are added back in, like Bottom Road, the first one you see deleted there gets added back below, but it gets added back with slightly less mileage because that was an error in the mileage. And then Clinton Avenue gets added back, deleted and then added back, but they showed it as, there's a segment of it that it was shown as two-way when in fact it's only one-way. So there's a little bit less there. But some of the stuff on Lee Highway was added or deleted because it was, it was only two lanes, now it's four lanes, and so we changed that from two to four lanes, so we increased our mileage there. And they're just, in all cases where they're deleted, they're usually replaced back. Some of them just happen to be a name change, some of them are just minor changes, but overall we gain in mileage, and so we gain money from the state overall.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no one signed up for public comment on this one, so please read the resolution.
Resolution. A resolution of the city of Bristol, Virginia petitioning the Virginia Department of Transportation for maintenance payments for certain streets in the urban maintenance inventory system, UMIAS. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code section 33.2-319, the Virginia Department of Transportation makes payments to municipalities for the maintenance of qualifying highways. And whereas the Virginia Department of Transportation constructed an access road to the Sugar Hollow recreational area circa 1988 under recreational asset access project 1749-095-221 M501, and whereas the Sugar Hollow recreational area and the access road were subsequently annexed by the city of Bristol, Virginia, and are now within the corporate limits of the city of Bristol, Virginia. And whereas the Virginia Department of Transportation procedures require that municipalities requesting lane mileage additions and deletions for payments under 33.2-219, submit Form U1, request for street additions, deletions, or conversions for municipal assistance street payments as approved by the municipality's governing body. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Bristol, Virginia, that the city of Bristol, Virginia hereby petitions the Virginia Department of Transportation to accept or delete those streets listed on Form U1 for street maintenance payments. A copy of said Form U1 being attached hereto and made a part of this resolution. Two, that Form U1 and accompanying maps for added new roads and a copy of this resolution shall be transmitted to the resident engineer administrator of the Virginia Department of Transportation. And three, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its passage. Adopted the 22nd day of January 2019.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt the resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second, Mr. Wingard. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Got a head on that one.
All right, item 4, consider approval of resolution of support for fire department equipment. Staff report.
Chief Armstrong, if you want to come up too, just in the event you're needed. Last year we budgeted, it was in the budget for $180,000 for potential capital purchases. Those capital purchases were contemplated, that there would be a ladder truck that would be needed and a pumper truck that would be needed. And it has come to that point where we have found a ladder truck, I think they're working on a pumper truck as well, in order for us to purchase that. And part of that purchase requirement requires a resolution of support from the governing body that it's, that you all agree with the purchase of that equipment. And what we have, our ladder truck is 20 years old, about 130,000 miles, I believe, 121,000 miles. The ladder does not work. At a bare minimum, it would cost $15,000 to fix. That requires taking the truck to Roanoke, and our fleet maintenance manager says the truck will not make it to Roanoke because of the transmission, and the transmission would then have to be replaced. But $15,000 is the low cost to fix that ladder. And then you just received a packet earlier this evening that talks about the maintenance that's gone into that truck. The pumper truck is 27 years old, has over 100,000 miles on it, and it has had significant maintenance issues. A new engine was put in it five years ago, and it's basically on its last leg as well. So we're at a point where these two trucks are vital to fire department operations, and as of today, unless it's been fixed, we do not have an aerial ladder in the truck that works at the moment.
Okay. All right, no one signed up for public comment, so you want to go ahead and read the resolution?
Sure. Resolution support of fire department equipment, whereas section 7.05 of the charter of the city of Bristol, Virginia gives the fire department a responsibility for the protection from fire of life and property within the city, and whereas the Bristol, Virginia Fire Department requires certain equipment to meet the charge given to them by the charter. And whereas the Bristol, Virginia City Council recognizes the need to make sure that equipment is in operable condition for the safety of firefighters and residents, and whereas the Bristol, Virginia City Council included funding in fiscal year 19 budget that would allow the fire department to purchase a new pumper truck and a new ladder truck. And therefore be it resolved that the Bristol, Virginia City Council provides authorization to make those purchases as provided for in the fiscal year 19 budget, passed and adopted by the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia at a regularly scheduled meeting of this said council on January 22, 2019.
All right, looking for a motion in a second to adopt the resolution.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, got a motion, Mr. Osborne. Second, Mr. Farnham. Any discussion? Okay, I think there was a lot of due diligence done, chief, so we appreciate all the hard work. I was right, read the packets, all the financial analysis that was done to see the condition and what our leases were to make sure we stay within budget was, was good, well received, so that was some good work. I'm glad to see we're putting a ladder truck up because, you know, now that Bristol Hotel's open, you know, it's, that's one of the things that, when you ask people what keeps you up at night, that could be something that keeps you up at night, right? Something was to happen, not having the ability to get on the top of that building. So good work. All right, any other comments or discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, number 5, consider approval of resolution establishing city, citizen budgetary advisory committee and a solid waste disposal fund advisory committee. Staff report.
Council, on Thursday morning, I met with Mr. Mumpower and Mr. Wingard in regards to our solid waste disposal fund, and throughout those discussions, it was, it was decided that it might be best if we have an advisory committee in order to have a second set of eyes on the solid waste disposal fund and the general fund budget. So with that being said, and the fact that I was leaving town on, immediately after that meeting, I did not get an opportunity to review exactly what needed to be done and what our charter requires, but our charter requires an ordinance for any committee or board that is being set up. I was just saying board, it doesn't necessarily say committee, but I think to err on the side of caution, it would be wise to enact it under an ordinance under section 8.01 of our charter. With that being said, I don't think the resolution does anything other than say you all want to do it, but we would need to, in my opinion, define the scope of what each one of these committees will do and what the end result is that we're looking for. But we need to properly advertise for an ordinance to do this. We can get that done if I get that direction tonight.
Okay. All right, no one signed up for public comment, so you want to go ahead and read the resolution?
Sure. Resolution establishing a citizen budget advisory committee and a solid waste disposal fund advisory committee. Whereas the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia is responsible for adopting an annual budget which includes city's general fund and solid waste disposal fund, and whereas the city council acknowledges that there will be a difficult decision to be made in order to protect the financial stability of the city, and whereas the city council recognizes the value of citizen input for important budgetary decisions. And therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia hereby establishes a citizen budget advisory committee and a solid waste disposal fund advisory committee. These committees will meet as needed to provide input and recommendations on budget matters and matters concerning the solid waste disposal fund. Each committee is to be made up of five to seven residents of the city of Bristol. The citizen budget advisory committee will be selected by the city manager and the chief financial officer, while the solid waste advisory committee will be selected by members of city council, passed and adopted by the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council on January 22, 2019.
Okay. All right, looking for a motion to adopt the resolution.
Move to adopt.
All right, got a motion, Mr. Wingard. Okay, I guess the motion fails to get a second, so council discussion.
Well, I believe that the more eyes that we can put on our finances with the right people, we'll be able to make better and sound decisions in this city. I said it when I was appointed a little over two years ago, that it's going to take this whole entire city to help get us out of this financial crisis that we've found ourselves But obviously, we don't have the support to pull in what I would think to be, you know, the movers and shakers in this city that knows how money is made and generated, and what overhead and expenses are wishes and wants, and what is pure necessity. The discussion this morning was, it takes too long to get everybody's head wrapped around it, and they wouldn't be ready for this budget cycle. Well, if you started now, they'd be ready for the 2021 budget. But I am a firm believer that it's going to take more than, than these five men up here and the city leaders to navigate through this. We are going to have to have everybody working together. Because when you get a group of people together and they start bouncing stuff off the wall, some of it sticks and some of it just hits the floor, but you don't know what's going to stick until you start talking about it. Get people out of the community up here on this podium to speak to us, they're going to say the safe things, but a lot of times, you've got to ask the stupid questions, and the stupid questions need to be asked in a controlled environment. And people tend to feed off of one another once they start talking, and ideas are generated. But unfortunately, it doesn't look like we're going to have that opportunity.
Well, I think my comment would be, it's disappointing because as council, we ask for citizens' input. We have on multiple occasions asked for this community to look at our problems, and so for us not to support putting a couple advisory committees together, I think sends, one, the wrong message, two, I think it's just an advisory committee, so I think you've got to take it in the spirit of, you know, it's an advisory committee, it's not that we act on anything. So I think it's very important. I think if we think that the city has the expertise, or this council has the full expertise to look at the solid waste landfill and the budget in the right eyes and uncover everything we need to look at, I think we're mistaken. And so I would, I would encourage the council to rethink this and come back and talk to city manager and myself, and let's try to get this back on the agenda, but if we get the right people together, you can move what appears to be a very dire situation like the solid waste and move it into a very positive arena if you get the right eyes on it, you start analyzing it properly. So that's what the intent of this advisory council would be, you know, to look at it. Because we have to understand, city staff only has so many hours a day, and so they're kind of, you know, under the gun to get the budget done, you know, in a pretty timely manner, so having the real eyes and ears to focus on a problem this large takes a lot of extra effort. So, so I would just ask that, since it failed at the city council, rethink this and let us know if you want to put it back on the agenda.
So I would like to maybe just jump in. I mean, I like the idea of these advisory committees, you know, but they'd be coming in behind the eight ball for this year. I mean, I could elect it on May 1st, so I've been about eight or nine months getting my head around the budget. I can't imagine being, even if you volunteer, coming into a budget this big and just trying to come up with any kind of suggestion on this short of notice, and being able to commit that amount of time in this short of notice. So I mean, if we did something like this for the next budget, you know, like the vice mayor said, that'd be fine. I just don't know that it would be a good road to go down with, we're already in the budget season, and, you know, we're crafting the budget right now. I don't know that we need to do this on this short of notice.
Yeah, I would add to that. I mean, the concept, I'm not opposed to, there's a lot of things in that resolution that I would question, such as why one committee is selected by the city manager and the other by the city council. How do we come up with five to seven? I mean, that seems like a reasonable number, but you're trying to find 10 to 14 people when a lot of times we struggle to get people to serve on a board or commission as it is. Also, why would we want to limit ourselves to 10 to 15 people providing input? I mean, I think we need to get people, you know, we say we want input, and this will come up later when we talk about the budget calendar, but, you know, we could have, as I mentioned to city manager earlier, you know, the first year I was on council, we had a, like a, I think it was a town hall or forum, not just where people, where people could ask questions and interact. I mean, it's not a workshop where they just sit there and they can't ask a question, or they only get three minutes. I think we could allow people more time and have a more interactive thing so that people, you know, that are looking at this issue that have ideas, maybe we could implement them this year. As far as next year, I mean, you know, if this was something we wanted to do, I don't know why we didn't talk about this in September and October and get the process started, because it's going to take a while to get the applications from people, to put them on the committee, to give them the background, and then make a recommendation. Really, right about now is when they should be making recommendations, in the next two to four weeks at most, so that the city manager can implement those and we can begin to discuss them. So, and if it takes an ordinance, I mean, that's going to delay it anyway, so, you know, the concept is, like I say, I think there's other avenues that people can be much more engaged and involved, but like I say, there's some things in the wording of this that, just looking at, that I would question.
Yeah, my question was, and this will be the first budget season I'm going through here on council, and I guess we'll talk about it a little bit later on in the agenda, about the calendars we're going through in the spring and how many times there will be opportunities for any citizen in the city to come and speak and maybe give any ideas that they may have, but I guess we'll talk about that in a little bit, but, but we do have that, right, where... But, but we do have that, right, where?
Citizens can come all, I mean, I've got an open door policy. I think it's probably well-known throughout the community that people can come and talk to me at any time. I've had that policy since day one and that, you know, people are more than welcome to come and speak at any council meeting we have. And then especially during budget season, I really don't think, I think this council's been very good about allowing people to speak, even I know there's been some workshops where typically they wouldn't speak, but for whatever reason, maybe it was a big item we were dealing with and people had some stronger feelings about it. And I know this council's been very receptive to folks at any given time. So there's, there's ample opportunities for people to talk in regards to the budget between now and June thirtieth.
Well, it's my opinion, there's a big difference in two or three people talking versus setting up an environment that they can come and really study and dig in and bounce ideas around. There's a huge difference in the atmospheres.
I mean, that's true, but when you look at, if you do this, you know, you're either going to have to come into closed session with us to interview, or going to be talking to Randy and you're talking to city manager to interview. And that in itself is intimidating. So, I mean, if you're getting, you're getting people who are already comfortable with working with local governments and working with that kind of setting, I would, I would think that maybe Mr. Hartley's idea of a forum where you can just have as many people as you want hopefully show up, you get a lot more broader ideas. I mean, it might be, instead of ten people, it might be forty people, and they don't get as much time to talk about it, but you hear a more wide berth of ideas, and I think, I think that'd be beneficial.
And one of the things I, I think is great about the forum is, is, I mean, this committee, you know, like you say, there'd be behind a closed door bouncing ideas of all, off of each other. If it's a forum, it's out here, the public can hear, the people can watch it online. Not everybody that follow, there's a lot of people that follow what this council does that don't sit in that audience. They watch it online, either at home because they can't come down here on a Tuesday for a variety of reasons, or they come back the next time. But I know in talking to people, there's a lot of people out there. And, I mean, if there was somebody in particular that, that when you were thinking of this you had in mind, I'd say give them the information and sit down and talk to them, have them talk to the city manager, come sometime and share with us. But the only chance for all five of us to hear is in an open forum. Otherwise, you know, we're going to get a condensed version of that discussion. And at the end of the day, the recommendation's good or bad, whatever they are, we're going to be the ones that, that have to pass that and accept the responsibility for it.
Well, I'll just say one more time, I think we're creating all the reasons why not to do it versus the reasons why to do it. I think you'd be surprised when you get a small group together and you let them focus. And there was no intent for these to be closed-door meetings. I mean, they could be in here as a forum and you can add, you know, that committee can add or delete people as they needed to for the discussion. But to open it up as a wide-open forum has, has disadvantages as well, because then it's not focused, there's just lots of discussion that's not really facilitated properly, and then you don't get down to really the do's and don'ts. So there's, there's advantages and disadvantages both ways. So I think, my opinion is, we have to do something. We know for a fact that the landfill problem's not going to go away, and it's going to take a lot of people to look at that. So we have to do something. So the idea was put a folk, small group together, start focusing on it, you know, where they could spend some additional hours, you know, during the week to really start analyzing it in, in the financial detail needed to see what, what we could do and then show that as a public display of data. Our idea was just to have a room opened up with all the data up, so anybody could go in there at any time and see the data. So, you know, you could have those open forms, you could have two or three of them in there, you know, if you wanted to along the way to, you know, kind of see what the committee and advisory board was coming up with. But, so anyway, it's, it's, the context of which we need to do it is, is right. So if we need to, you know, try to tailor it a little bit, you know, write down what you think needs to be tailored, let's, let's revisit it if we need to. All right, next item is six, consider approval of Lee Highway right-of-way and limited access line relocations.
I'll kind of just cut in the chase on this one. I need council support to change the limited access line at the southbound exit five off ramp. This is part of the Lee Highway Phase One B project. If you look up at the slide there, the existing limited access line is in red and our proposed one is in green. This is required, your support is required by the Transportation Board for approval.
Okay. Anything else? Is that it?
That's it.
All right. No one signed up for public comments, so I'm looking for a motion a second to approve that change on the right-of-way boundary.
Move to approve.
Okay, got a motion, Mr. Osborne?
Second.
Second, Mr. Farnum? Okay, in discussion. Okay. Please call a roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item seven, consider approval of financial policies.
Waiting on Jane to pull up the PowerPoint. Mayor and members of council, three finance policies are presented tonight. These policies have been reviewed multiple times by the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee consists of the mayor, Councilman Hartley, the city manager, the chief financial officer, the senior accountant, the treasurer, the commissioner of revenue, the school superintendent, and the school chief financial officer. These policies are presented with the recommendation of the Finance Committee. The purpose of these policies is to develop a finance manual, which is available both in the finance department and on the website to the public. These policies will guide the city in best financial practices. These policies will be reviewed and discussed regularly at Finance Committee meetings and at council meetings. They will establish written financial, I'm sorry, establishing written financial policies is how the city creates standardization and implements best practices. As mentioned earlier, these policies come to council at the recommendation of the Finance Committee. The city has previously, previously adopted other policies, in particular, the fund balance policy in November of two thousand seventeen, the purchasing policy in November of two thousand seventeen, and the budget policy in August of two thousand seventeen. We're going to start with the travel policy. The travels policy establishes clear guidelines for employee travel. The policy sets a maximum meal and incidental reimbursement of sixty-one dollars per day. The committee felt this was an adequate amount based on the federal and state allowable amounts for various cities in the Commonwealth. This policy requires overnight travel for reimbursement. There will be no reimbursement for day trips. And this policy specifically lists disallowed expenditures. The credit card policy. This policy establishes clear guidelines for items that are charged on city credit cards. It describes what is allowed, what is allowed use of city credit cards relating to travel and purchases. It specifically lists certain items that cannot be charged on a city credit card. The policy requires a user, user agreement to be signed by those departments who have credit cards. The final policy we will discuss tonight is the financial policies policy. The purpose of this policy is to insulate the city from a fiscal crisis. It will serve as the guide for decisions that have significant fiscal impact. The policy will promote long-term financial stability. The policy directs attention to the total financial picture. And this policy establishes the guide to ensure sound financial management. Another purpose of this policy is to protect the city's credit rating. It lists the city, the city's goal is to achieve a triple-A credit rating, the highest credit rating for a local government. This will require significant fiscal discipline by the, by the city, but the Finance Committee felt like the goal should be triple-A. The policy limits the maximum overall legal and moral obligation debt, and this policy will be reviewed and presented to council by January thirty-first of each year. The revenue section of this policy addresses revenue collections to monitor that all taxes are collected timely and accurately. It states that a reassessment for all real property will be completed every four years. Revenue forecasts will be conservative yet accurate. Restricted revenues shall only be used for the intended purpose. The city will limit the use of one-time revenues to one-time expenditures such as non-recurring items. And unless related to carryover funds, the use of unassigned fund balance should not be used to finance current operations without specific approval by council as a regular agenda item. The expenditure section of the policy states that one-time expenditures should be funded with an offsetting revenue or from an adequately funded reserve. Ongoing expenditures will be monitored in comparison with appropriations. The city will seek to optimize the efficiency and effectiveness of all services. And department heads will be responsible for managing expenditures within the operating budget. Oops, I didn't flip the side, sorry. The city has a separate budget policy which details the specifics of the budget process. The budget is listed in this policy for financial policy completeness. The city's budget will be balanced, ongoing and stable revenue, revenues will be used to support ongoing operating costs. Monthly reports comparing actual revenues and expenditures to budgeted amounts will be prepared monthly and distributed to departments. Budget adjustments between line items may be authorized by the city manager. Council must approve supplemental appropriations. The capital improvement program section of the policy requires a five-year capital improvement plan. The program consists of two components. The capital plan, which lists the items the locality anticipates needing within the next five years, and the capital budget, which the city manager will present annually to council for approval. The debt section of the policy is the largest section of this policy and sets the guidelines for making financial decisions relating to debt. The city does not intend to use tax anticipation notes, but this section allows that if the timing of revenues requires the issuance of these notes, the notes may be issued as outlined in the budget ordinance. There are two debt ratio, debt ratios listed in the policy. Even though state law allows the issuance of general obligation debt up to ten percent of assessed value, this policy restricts the city to five percent of assessed value for general obligation debt. Five percent is approximately fifty-eight million dollars. If the current debt payoff schedules are maintained, it will be in fiscal year two thousand thirty-three that we reach this, this threshold. Until that percentage is reached, a written action plan is required to be presented to council by the city manager annually that addresses the excess debt or any new debt to be issued. The ceiling for debt as a percentage of operating expenditures within each fund is set in the policy at eight percent. The current general fund ratio is six percent. The solid waste disposal fund ratio is thirty percent currently. Compliance with these policies will be calculated each year and provided to council with the proposed budget. They will also be available to the public in the budget document. The long-term debt policy describes when the city may use debt. It also lists the criteria for evaluating funding for capital improvements. This is a quote here from the policy. Under no circumstances is it recommended to issue long-term debt obligations for private enterprise products where business plans and market risk play a significant role in the outcome of the project. The last, last section of the policy is financial reporting. This section states that the city's financial statements will conform to generally accepted accounting principles as established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. The city will maintain an accounting system to allow for the accurate and timely preparation of financial statements. Audit results will be presented to city council for acceptance. The Finance Committee will regularly review the financial activity of the city and may report to council any areas of significant concern. Monthly financial statements will be distributed to council. Quarterly financial updates will be provided to council. Compliance ratios will be presented. At a minimum, this will consist of two years of actuals of audited data, the current year ratios and the ratios proposed in the upcoming budget. This concludes the presentation of the travel policy, the credit card policy, and the financial policies. The Finance Committee recommends that council approve the travel policy, the credit card policy, and the financial policies.
All right, so no one signed up for public comments? I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve these policies that CFO just went over with us.
I move that we adopt the financial policies as presented.
Second. Got a motion, Mr. Hartley, same as Mr. Osborne, to adopt. Any discussion?
I just want to, you know, having sat in with the Finance Committee on these meetings and the mayor as well, the staff, everybody helped come up with these. This is a good set of policies, something that's been needed for a long time. I think anyone that looks at it would realize that had these been in place previous years ago, we might not have some of the discussions we're having now. But it's a good set of policies to guide us forward. And one of the things I like particularly is how every year before we get into the budget, we have to go back and look at the policies and make sure they're still applicable and if we need to make any changes or modifications. So it's not just something that's going to sit upon a shelf, and I think this is something that the, the city staff will, will make sure is used to its fullest.
Yeah, I just wanted to say at first, thank you all for all that. I've only been sitting here in this seat for about two months now, but I've lived in Bristol all my life. And I know you all weren't here in the past, but like Bill said, it would have been good to have this ten years ago, twenty years ago, already in place. But overall, it's a good thing, and I think we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, this is, it's an aggressive plan, but it's needed. And the debt ratio, keeping it at five percent, I think is, is a big, is a big move. And again, I think it's needed, and if we didn't have this, if we had this ten years ago, we wouldn't be where we are now. So hopefully we can avoid any other mistakes down the road with this.
Well, the only thing I wanted to say was, there was a lot of hard work went into this. I want to thank everyone on the committee. I mean, we had several meetings, so it was a lot of discussion on a lot of those items. But if you really read the details behind the policies, I mean, you'll notice that there's specific wording in there to address some of the big issues that we've been dealing with over the last several years, specifically the debt ratio, the debt loads, and where you should and where you should not issue general obligation bonds. That's why that statement of you really never should have a private enterprise being funded by a general obligation bond when you got all that market risk in front of you that you can never get your arms around and put the city taxpayers at risk. So we, we tried to make some very bold moves in there to cap ceilings, but also put some accountability there. So behind, even though we're above the debt limit, it requires a written action plan so it makes you continue to talk about what you're going to do to get to where you need to get to. So it's not just, you know, laid under a desk and forgotten. So I think, I think it's going to create some good, good results as, you know, a year or two goes down the road as we talk about it and deal with what we've got to deal with. So, so with that said, we'll go ahead and call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Item A, presentation on capital improvement program.
This is the capital improvement plan. This is just a plan, we're not going to vote on it tonight or any thing like that. I just want to get you all started thinking about what we need to do as far as capital projects here in the city of Bristol in regards, I'll just follow up with what Mr. Osborne just said in regards to mistakes that have been made in the past. One mistake that's been made in the past is the city has not had a capital plan to deal with capital projects and capital purchases that we need to deal with. We've spent a significant amount of time on this, and I'll just kind of give you an overview of how we got there. So this is a five-year plan of identified capital needs that come from the general fund. This does not include any solid waste. This does not include any solid waste capital needs because we're still working on a revenue stream for those capital needs at the solid waste disposal fund, nor does this include schools. There will be a discussion in regards to capital improvement for schools next year. And I do know that Dr. Perigin will be going over some capital projects as well here in this upcoming budget cycle. A capital item is per city capitalization threshold, an original cost of $5,000, and the useful life of over one year. So that's what we set the capital plan threshold for. Items will be presented by appropriation during the budget cycle, and this is only a capital plan. I just want to reiterate that. How the plan was developed, we had a committee that included myself, the chief financial officer, director of public works, chief of police, fire chief, the sheriff, and information and technology manager. We had department worksheets were sent out to all departments, and these worksheets were sent for the purpose of them identifying capital needs that they would need over the next five years. They completed those worksheets, submitted those back to finance, and then the department head presented those requests to the committee during meetings. They came in and told us why they needed certain things. We ranked those items that required local money and reviewed the ranking. Any items that were funded by federal or state monies were not included in this, however they are in the capital plan because they will be funded by other funding sources. There's an annual cutoff that was established based on the local funds that are available. If you'll look in your sheet, you can see where the yellow highlighted lines are. So the first year, the yellow highlighted line up is year one. Second year, I think there's only three projects. In the third year, there's maybe five projects, and then the last year, there's six or seven smaller projects. Our project assessment form, the question was and how we graded it was, did the project contribute to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens? Did the project need to comply with local, state, or federal law? Did the project need to conform to an adopted program, policy, or plan that was already existing within the city? Did the project remedy an existing or a projected deficiency within the city? Did the project contribute to long-term needs of the community? And what is the service area of the project? Is it a regional-type project, a city-wide, or would it affect just a certain neighborhood? Is the project a department priority? And does the project deliver a level of service desired by the community? And then where was the project funding stream from? Once again, was it federal, state, local, or debt funding? And was it part of the city vision plan that was adopted in 2014, I believe? The plan was, once again, we're continuing with how this was developed. One, we need to develop a vehicle fleet rotation. What we've done in the past, we waited till every vehicle was beyond repair, and then we went out and leased a bunch of vehicles. We want to eventually get away from leases, and I'll show you that we'll be getting away from leasing vehicles as we go through this plan. As current leases expire, those funds will be used to replenish the rotation plan. And our goal is to rotate 12 vehicles a year for a total of about $480,000, and we'll get there in 2023. So for the first year, fiscal year 19 and 20, the capital items that scored the highest are your Lee Highway, exit five, phase 1B. That is part of what was discussed tonight. The Bonham Road shared use path, the King's Mill Pike curve reconstruction, that's there near North Star Church. There's numerous accidents that occur there, and it actually has popped up, I think, on VDOT's radar that something needed to be done there in that area of King Mill Pike. The fire department, the park monitors and defibrillators. The police department needs the repeater replaced. That's been talked about since January of 17. I remember when I first came here, it was a Saturday, one of my first meetings, and I remember Chief Austin standing here talking about the repeater that needed to be replaced then. The fire department needs a radio system. This will allow them, if I'm not mistaken, communicate with police and fire all on one frequency, is that?
Lifesaving.
And the lifesaving crew as well. Also, they need fire hoses, and then they need new mobile data terminals for their fire trucks and ambulances. The police department just was upgraded. I think half of their mobile data terminals this year will update the other half this coming fiscal year, and it's time for the fire department to update theirs. They have computers that just don't work, and I think Mr. Wingard's seen how some of the computers don't work when he went out on a ride along with the police, and the fire department's in that same boat. So this is the capital improvement plan. You can see in fiscal year 19, we have a total of $11.8 million for this upcoming year. $301,000 of that is general funds, and then there's some debt funding, which is coming that we have available to use. And then I think that says revenue reserve funding, I'm sorry. My eyesight's getting worse. And then summary by function, there's not any capital items in government administration. Public safety amounts to $1.4 million. Public Works is $10,000. Transit is $138,050. And then infrastructure's $10.2 million. And you can see over the life of this, you'll see the vehicle replacement. This year, there would not be any funds associated with vehicle replacement. However, in 2020, when leases start rolling off, we'll have $226,000 available to begin that rotation of vehicles. And then it continues to increase over the next four years until we get to 2024, which then we would have $480,000 to be able to purchase 12 vehicles at a time with. And then that leaves you a reserve at that time of 1.2 million for capital improvements. In 2018-19, it was $301,000 that was set aside. In 1920, with the way things are rolling off, we'll have $399,000 plus the $226,000 that we'll be using for local vehicle or for purchases of vehicles for a total of $625,000. And the percent of that of the general funds, 1.2%. I will say that the VGFOA, through one of the conferences that Ms. Bradlin has attended, has suggested a healthy capital improvement plan accounts for about 3% of your general fund budget. Eventually, we get there in 23, 24 at 3.23% with a total of about $1.68 million. This is the state funds and federal funds of how things will be paid for this upcoming year, where all that money is going to in regards to the Bonham Road, Paulina Drive sidewalk, the Lee Highway, Old Airport intersection, Euclid, Morrison Signal, the shared use path of Overhill to Clover, Fairview Street Bridge improvements, Goodson Street Bridge replacement, and the Martin Luther King Bridge rehab for a total of about $1.9 million. And then you can see where other improvements are going to continue throughout the next several years. And that is the capital improvement plan as it stands. I'll happy to take any questions or comments.
I don't think I have any questions right now, but I just wanted to say a comment. I think it makes sense that we, as a city, recognize that we have expenses that are coming up, and we're, we know we don't want to borrow for everything. So we're making a plan to prioritize and take care of them as they come up. So I think it's a good idea.
I'll second that and add that in my experience on council, at least when we first started, is capital improvement plan consisted of things that could be financed through debt and not really thinking ahead as to what needed to be. And I think, you know, one of the things is, as the city starts to get in a little bit better financial shape, you can see that you have some money to put into these things that, again, probably should have years ago. You know, I remember one of the early capital needs, I mean, it was just staggering what you see. And as you've mentioned with the radio system, I mean, things that year after year after year, you keep seeing come back up, and they never seem to get the funding. So, you know, we can only put those things off so long.
I'll jump in here, too. I think it's great that I saw a lot of infrastructure spending on there, and it's good to plan that out ahead because we have some serious infrastructure issues roadwise in the city, and especially with those bridges that need fixing or replacing, and some of them look pretty rough. So, and that's indicative of the whole country, not just here. But I'm glad that we're taking steps to address it now, and we have an actual plan to do it. That's actually something I get asked about a lot, is what's going on with this bridge or that bridge, you know? So I really appreciate that we're planning out on what to do with those specifically.
The only thing I would say, the plan looks reasonably good the way it's put together. And, you know, we talked about, you know, one thing about a good capital execution plan is having that next level of detailed approval packages, you know, that you put together that the department head or whoever's asking for the capital describes why they need it. You know, what if we don't do it? What are the consequences or risks? And then put together the expenses that have led up to why we have to replace it today if we're spending X dollars of maintenance on it that's, you know, well above what's normal, that's all listed there. And then you see a return on that investment, you know, calculation on that sheet. So if we put that detail together with a plan like this, it puts a lot of accountability to the visual of why we need it and how we're going about the analysis of approving the money. So that'd be kind of the last thing I think is needed here, and you've got a pretty solid program.
Yeah, I mean, everybody knows nothing lasts forever. You've got a plan for failure and, you know, things wearing out. And the city has operated for way too long in a crisis mode, waiting till it's a disaster and then borrowing the money. And that's a lot of what's got us where we're at, is ill-planning. And you've got to look out forward enough to set aside some funds and know that these expenditures are coming and not be blindsided by all this. Everybody knows vehicles wear out. I mean, we're talking tonight about a 27-year-old pump truck, you know? Don't know what the expected life on it, but 27 years on a vehicle's considerable. So, very good. I mean, we've got to start thinking like this and setting money aside and getting prepared mentally, knowing that these bills are coming, and not let them blindside you.
And just a note on what Councilman Osborne said about infrastructure, even something as simple as that, you know, when it comes to people coming here, having nice roads, nice sidewalks, making it easy to get around, I mean, that could be a factor when it comes to people looking at moving here to live in the city or businesses looking to relocate here. So, yeah, it's good.
All right. Next slide, well, I'll.
So we'll move on to item nine, the budget calendar discussion.
Yes. The budget calendar, I don't think I have a slide, I don't think. But you have the budget calendar there in front of you. It's on the very last page of the packet. You can see that we've already started working on the budget. We've actually moved things up a little bit this year for several different reasons, as we'll get into it here shortly. My goal is to continue to move this budget process along, continue to make it smoother. I felt like we had a smooth budget season last year, and I want to improve upon what we did last year so that we can do what we need to do for our citizens and get a proper budget in place, not necessarily sooner rather than later, but in an appropriate amount of time so that everyone has an opportunity to review it and understand what's going on. Budget work papers were already sent to the department back on January 4th, and those had a due date of yesterday, I believe, or last Friday, that they were due back in finance. So we've got some of those back, and there's been one or two departments seeing an extension in which we happily gave them a few extra days to get that done due to the size of their budget. Outside agency applications are due on January 31st. If there's an outside agency that received funding last year, they have been notified. If there was an outside agency that has not received funding, that application is available on the website, or they can just contact me, and I can get that application to them. During the month of February, there'll be internal department management meetings to go over each of their budget requests and determine what is appropriate. Also, throughout February and March, we'll be in the budget development process. I anticipate that we will be, just like last year, having two-on-twos with you all, probably more starting in March more so than in February because we still need to get certain things together before we get you all involved. Our first budget workshop will be February the 28th of 2019, and then we'll have another budget workshop on March the 7th. And then on March the 12th, the Bristol-Virginia Public School will present their budget for the upcoming year. On March 26th, we're going to have the budget hearing and a public hearing, or the budget presentation and a public hearing. And the reason for that is very important because we have to set the tax rate sooner rather than later in order to properly abide by state code so that we can have a, you have to have a public hearing prior to setting that tax rate, and this allows us to do that by having that budget presentation on March the 26th. And then on April the 9th, which is regularly scheduled council meeting, there will be a tax rate resolution. At this point, I'm not anticipating asking council for a tax rate increase or decrease at this point. I think it'll stay the status quo this year. On April 23rd, there'll be another public hearing in regards to the appropriation ordinance for individuals to come out and speak. And it's also important to know, after that first public hearing of the budget, that's when you all can start making recommendations to change the budget for this upcoming year because until you have that public hearing, technically, you all can not make any recommendations on that budget. On April 27th, there'll be another budget workshop. I anticipate having the first reading of the budget ordinance on May the 14th and a second reading on May the 28th. Of course, these dates are also to be changed, and we can always add more dates as we deem necessary throughout the process.
Comments on the dates? The only thing I've, looking at those dates, the only thing I didn't see was, you know, we always struggle to get a pretty solid preliminary revenue projection number, and then here's the firm date where we have to have a final revenue top-line number. So I didn't see that in anywhere. So before we can really vote on a tax rate and know what to do and get to those, you know, May meetings where you got the budget being looked at, we need to insert, I think, some revenue timelines in there to.
I think what you have to do in regards to the revenue, when you're looking at the revenue, you're only going to have roughly half your revenue in by the first part of January. And your other revenue is smaller, and then your big, your second, large set of revenue doesn't come in until June with our second set of payments for real estate taxes. You know, for me to get you a revenue projection that's 99% accurate even by May would be, I wouldn't say impossible, but it wouldn't be anywhere near accurate. I think what you have to do is look at historically what the revenue has been and make your best guess so that you can start working on that budget at that, without knowing exactly, because you're not going to know until June 30th what your revenue is.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is a recommended revenue projection from the Commissioner of Revenues Office that says, here's our, you know, here's our solid projection for the next fiscal year of what the revenue looks like that you can count on for the budgetary process.
I think we see that throughout the Finance Committee meetings. We can see where that revenue is trending, and we can, and we do meet with Commissioner of Revenue, and that is one of the questions when we go over the revenue with her, what big things is she seeing coming and what big things is she seeing she's going to lose? Because she has to be on top of that so that we can project comfortably what's getting ready to happen for the upcoming fiscal year. But if you all want her to present, I'll be more than happy to have her here to present that.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, that top-line number is a pretty important number, right?
Right.
So in that list of dates there, just slot in where you're going to say, here's the line in the sand, here's our best final professional estimate of that top-line revenue, and have the Commissioner of Revenue support it. If by discussion, that's fine, that's up to you how you do that, but.
And I'll also say, we had our first phone call with Chomera Economics and Analytics today. That is due to our designation of being the most fiscally distressed locality in the Commonwealth where the state is helping us with that. So they're actually going to go back to the early 2000s to start looking at our historical data and hopefully give us some good projections going forward for the next five to seven years and how we need to look at things. We probably won't have that studied back prior to the public presentation of the budget, but they're, very shortly thereafter, if we need to make serious adjustments, I think, based on their analysis of our financial situation, we may be able to make some adjustments at that point as well.
My only comment with that, I appreciate each year this gets moved up with a little more wiggle room. It seemed like I can remember when it was the very last week of June, and you were doing the second reading. This has a good month in advance. And, you know, is, I think, kind of what the mayor was saying, what you were saying, that there's an advantage to waiting later in that you have a better handle on where those numbers may trend, is if you're doing it in January, you're trying to project 18 months out. In May, it's more like 13 or 14 months, plus you have a better handle on what the state might. Plus, you have a better handle on what the state might do, although this is a short session, so I don't know that there'll be a whole lot changed in the budget. My question was more around, you have two budget workshops in the February and March. I mean, are there particular things that we're going to talk? I know like last year, we spent one workshop on revenues, one on expenses, and.
And we're following that same format this year.
And then, you know, I guess, given the discussion before, that, you know, solid waste is something we, you know, again, those are brought on Thursday nights, which is, you know, I don't have an issue with that, but I just don't see those lasting more than a couple hours. You know, if we need a longer meeting, maybe we need to put a Saturday in there to have more, a longer discussion or have some input from, particularly like as was mentioned before, from the public, greater chance for them, not just at the public hearing, but more in a kind of interactive forum type thing.
We do have one on April 27th, and I'll be more than happy to schedule one on Saturday or two on Saturday, whatever we need to do. I just figure this is a good baseline, and let's see how we move and as we progress.
I mean, if we're wanting ideas of things to do, it seems like earlier in the process, you know, by the time you're down to April, you're.
It's too far gone.
Yeah, it's, I mean, at that point, it's hard, you're just moving things around. You're kind of boxed in. If it's earlier on, you might be able to change some things.
I would suggest maybe that Saturday after the March 12th meeting, maybe an appropriate time for a Saturday meeting. I don't know what day that'll be, probably the 15th or 16th.
I mean, again, 16th, following week before the.
Of course, that's right in March Madness, too, so.
Yeah. I think we've met here before, because I know Nancy said something about having to leave to go watch basketball.
Right.
Kentucky's not going to go this year, so that, Kentucky's out of it already.
They're, they'll be out in the first round, so. So if anybody, if we want to schedule March 16th, or we can do earlier, but I think at least by March 16th, we'll have had a couple of budget workshops, we can kind of see where things are going. And I will market that budget workshop, if council directs, as maybe an ideal work session with the public. Or maybe we take one of these Thursdays where we have a couple of hours as an ideal work session, or maybe do it on both days, that we market it as an ideal work session along with whatever other item we need to work on that day as well.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Randy.
Thanks.
All right, item 10, Consider Closed Session Pursuant to 2.2-3711(a5). Code of Virginia 1950 has amended discussion and consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected proprietary.
Private funds. We're meant to do that, Sam.
I did say A5. Oh, okay, so I'll read it again. Pursuant to 2.2-3711(a5), Code of Virginia 1950 has amended discussion concerning respective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, unannounced business prospect. Just need a motion and a second.
I make a motion, we move into closed session.
Second.
All right, motion, Mr. Farnham, second, Mr. Osborne, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Calm down. All right, we ready? All right, by roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as specified in the motion to convene in the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, on to the consent agenda. What's council's pleasure on this?
Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion, Mr. Osborne, second, Mr. Wingard, to approve as written. Any comments or anything? Okay, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, everybody adjourned.